Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will call the common council to order. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Person Turner.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Grob.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Helverson.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Knowling.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Ten present.
We have a quorum. Please rise if you are able and join us in the pledge, which will be led this evening by Alderman Turner.
The legislature is to declare the United States of America a truly public, overrated, stands one nation underground, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
Move on to part D of our agendas. We have four public hearings this evening, and I will ask the clerk to read out public hearing number one.
Conditional use permit for RCCG, Household of God, a proposed religious institution use at 6228 West Washington Street.
Thank you. Turn it over to staff. Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor, common counsel. My name is Steve Scher, Director of City Planning and Zoning. The first item here is a church. This has been historically a church, formerly a Christian church in the corner here, and then it had lapsed in occupancy of over a year. However, there is a new church, the Redeemer, the Redeemed Christian Church of God, which is a Bible-based church interested in reoccupying the space. And it's located in an RB residential zoning district, which is commonly for residential purposes. However, there is an allowance for religious institutions, schools, and so on. This will be a religious institution with limited hours, church and Bible study on Sundays from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and then also Bible studies Wednesdays from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And just some slides of the different pictures from within the building. There is a first and a second floor within the building. The overall size of the building is about 4,300 square feet. The lot is slightly larger, about 5,100 feet. But there is a, as most churches have, you know, obviously the worship space, office space, different rooms for different activities, a eat-in kitchen area, dining hall, and then also storage, and just common area space within the building. It's in very good shape, as you can see from some of the pictures, and then just some of the floor plans showing the overall altar or stage area, and then the church seating area on the left, and then behind that you have some larger general purpose rooms and offices. On the second floor upstairs, you have a kitchenette area and a larger hall of sorts, as well as some storage rooms above. No changes are proposed to the site. There is obviously some maintenance on the, on the site that will be attended to by the new, the new church members and parishioners, removal of a dead tree, and then locating a refuse location or bin on the site and screened as appropriate, as recommended by the planning commission. So this has been published in the official paper. Notice has been sent out to property owners within 200 feet, and there have been no objections to date. Plan Commission did recommend approval, subject to a landscaping plan being submitted, as well as a refuse location and signage and lighting plan if applicable to their use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Are there any questions from the common counsel?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Steve, I have a question about their operation. They didn't have, say they're gonna have like Saturday, Saturday hours at all, like for a wedding, or?
No, this is, it wasn't indicated. They're primarily focused on the Bible study and the church services.
Okay. But, so, I know that for like liquor licenses, when an application doesn't include a day of the week or a part of the day, then we tell them they need to be careful. I mean, I mean, so they're really gonna stick to these hours, two days a week?
That's what, yeah, that's what they have advised us in their application. Certainly, I mean, if council wants to hold them to those hours, I mean, or we could reach back out and ask them.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want it to turn into, you know, I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be on them about it anyways if they did weddings there. I don't, I don't think, but, but I think the public has a right to know.
Correct, right, yeah. I mean, we could certainly get that answered for you. I'll try to do so as he says.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the counsel? All right, seeing none, are there any members of the audience with questions on public hearing number one? All right, we will close our first public hearing. Thank you, and we will move on to item number two on our agendas this evening, and I will ask a clerk to read out item number two.
Ordinance to increase lot coverage maximum for residential accessory buildings.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Scher.
Thanks, Mayor. Current shed allowance, if you want to build a shed in the city of West Dallas on your lot, is 150 square feet on a paved surface. And just based on some of the past year's Board of Appeals cases that our Board of Appeals has, has addressed, there've been a number of requests to exceed that limit. And then staff took a little bit deeper, deeper dive, looking at some of our surrounding communities, specifically Wautosa, Oak Creek, Greenfield, and noticed that all of those communities have a little bit higher cap in terms of what you're allowed to build in terms of a residential accessory shed on your property. Oak Creek being one of the higher ones at 400 square feet, Greenfield at 250, and Wautosa has it based upon a percentage of a lot size, typically not more than 12% of the lot size, which can be a little confusing to some, some property owners. So what we've, what we've prepared here is a, an ordinance to allow a little bit more flexibility, preventing, preventing an oversized shed to the, to the size of the lot, but just sort of more of a form-based, you know, if you have a larger lot, you're allowed, you know, a little bit larger size of a shed. Again, it would be capped at a maximum of 300 square feet is what's proposed. All the other setback requirements within the zoning ordinance would, would remain the same, but the number 300, you know, from 150 to 300 would, would change. And this has been published. Plan Commission has recommended approval. There have been no objections to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the common counsel on item number two?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Grisham.
Steve, this may sound like a silly question, but how many accessory dwellings can we have on a property, for example?
Just one. So in terms of like a shed or gazebo, or?
Or?
Shed or gazebo are probably, shed is probably the most common that we see.
Good answer. Thank you.
Any other questions from the members of the counsel?
Yeah, Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
All right, now I have a question based on what you just said, Steve. You can have a shed or a gazebo, or a shed and a gazebo?
Technically, just one for property.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the members of the common counsel? All right, are there any members of the audience with questions or comments on public hearing number two? Okay, we will close our second public hearing, and we'll move on to item three, and I will ask our clerk to read out public hearing number three.
Ordinance to add recovery residents as a conditional use in certain zoning districts.
Thank you. Turn it back to Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. So recovery residences are not currently covered within our, within our zoning ordinance. Our zoning ordinance is silent on this matter. And what is a recovery residence? It's currently governed by Section 46 of the Wisconsin State Statutes. And what, how they define it within the state statutes is a home-like residential environment that promotes healthy recovery from a substance abuse disorder and supports residents through peer recovery support. These are often just, can be typical homes within a neighborhood. They're not treatment facilities. In other words, they're not, they're not licensed either by Department of Health Services. However, they can work in conjunction with outpatient services. They are voluntary in terms of the residents that, that use them. They reside in the homes and conduct their daily lives. Again, just part of a, part of a support group as part of their recovery journey, and then often completing inpatient while, while, after completing inpatient treatment. Registration with the Department of Health Services is, is possible but not mandatory in the state of Wisconsin. Registry is required, however, if, if that home is interested in receiving state referrals from the state or funding, potentially federal funding. So registry basically means agreeing to standards, operating with integrity, providing a safe environment, and fostering a culture of recovery. So the state statutes, you know, if you want to register a recovery residence, have some basic, some basic rules, which, you know, don't necessarily have a lot of teeth in them. They're sort of feel-good, you know, clauses. So it's currently, there's very few in the city of West Dallas. In fact, prior to this meeting, just taking a look at the Department of Health Services registry, there's, there aren't any registered within the, within the city of West Dallas currently. If you do a recovery residence near me search within, you know, Google, for instance, there's a number that show up, but not necessarily in West Dallas, within the Milwaukee County region, but not, I think there was one sort of centrally located off of 85th Street, off of Lincoln Avenue. Whether or not that's truly a recovery residence or some other group home, it's unknown. So the justification for this ordinance amendment, it was, it was brought before the Economic Development Committee back in August. We went over sort of the summary of this with them, and they directed us to prepare an ordinance amendment with the city attorney's help. And the justification again is that, you know, the zoning code is currently silent on this topic, and just given the, the state law is being sort of, you know, broad and, you know, not, not having very much teeth in this case, we think that defining, you know, what these uses are and some basic level of structure governance within the local ordinance does make sense for some general guidance purposes. So the, just a little bit more on the statutes. They do limit the city's ability to regulate these types of uses. We cannot locally license this type of activity, so in other words, you know, just some formal license process is not, not legal according to state statutes. However, we can operate, and we do, a property registration program, which is available to the city to utilize. And then, not necessarily proactively, but reactively, you know, if there is a call for, you know, police services, the nuisance law could potentially be of service. But those, those calls for service have to be qualifying calls for service that impact the, the neighborhood area, not just for someone inquiring, you know, why are there squads out in front of my house? And then due to state law, the city's proactive measures are, are limited. So zoning aside, you know, we only have the option to be reactive to the behavior at the property and, you know, contact your legislatures, legislators about perhaps even taking a closer look at Section 46 of the statutes to make more robust changes to the, to the state statutes. So in terms of how the city could consider regulating these, what the planning commission had advised, and what we've put before the counsel this evening, is basically to require a conditional use, not in all zoning districts, but in specific ones, the RC, and then specific commercial districts. The RC is a multifamily zoning district, and then C2, C3, and C4 are three of the four commercial zoning districts. And then in terms of calls for service, there's been a total of seven calls over the past year and a half. Only one of those calls has resulted in a, in an arrest. The rest were more minor, minor infractions, not resulting in a citation or an arrest. And with that, I'll just end saying that this has been published, and, you know, Plan Commission has recommended approval. Planning Commission wanted us to, you know, make sure we can exercise the property owner registration where it's applicable, and there have been no objections to date, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain those now. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the members of the counsel on public hearing number three?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Grisham.
Steve, so if I get this right, how does this differ from like group homes? Right now, we can have up to eight residences in one property, correct? There's no oversight really from the state. Anything else, is this purpose just for us to know?
Yeah, these are specifically called out in the statute, and they're different from the, the legal citations of, of what governing group homes or community living arrangements. So many of those cases with community living arrangements, there's typically a certain level of nursing care, staffing that goes along with that. Similar, but definitely a different set of rules that classifies them as community living arrangements. In this case, recovery residence is called out separately and is allowed, you know, differently from, from like, you know, the group home or community living arrangement.
Okay, thank you. And beyond that, like, I'm trying to get this, it's just a matter to register them so that if there is a problem or otherwise, we can classify it as a nuisance if it met that criteria?
Right, so our, in, in terms of the property owner registration, for typically multifamily or, or units that aren't owner occupied, the city can impose property owner, owner registration so we at least have a, a contact person. They, they don't reside on that site, but we do have a contact for that, for that property that if, if need be, you know, the city can get ahold of.
Okay, and final question. Say there's multiple recovery houses already set up in West Dallas. We find out that there is one that's not registered. What's our recourse? What, what do we do?
In that case, we're, they're simply legal non-conforming. They're considered, you know, not, they would, you know, the city could not, you know, retroactively go back and say, sorry, you have to close your doors. So they would be, you know, a legacy type of use, legal non-conforming. And any new operations would need to comply with the zoning standard if, if approved this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
Steve, can you go back one slide, please?
Sure.
All right, so it's a conditional use in, and I'm focusing on the, the residential districts, the RC districts, so other residential districts, this would, recovery residency says would be a permitted use, then?
No, so we're just treating recovery residence in general as a conditional use, and only in the RC, the C2, C3, and C4. So other districts like RA, you know, RB, not, they would not be allowed.
Would not be allowed.
Correct, yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Thank you, Alderman Haas, Alderman Weigel.
Steve, back to the existing non-conforming, legacy uses. But if we don't know where any are now, and we find one, say in 60 days or whatever, when this goes into effect, and they say, oh, but we've been here for a year already. I mean, because we don't really know what we, how many are out there right now. I mean, how would that be treated? I mean, I guess if they could prove to us that they were?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that, that would be the, the case. It'd be very hard. We'd have to, they'd have to prove themselves, and we'd try to investigate that. It's, it's difficult, again, given the state statutes. We're trying to do something.
Right.
Something is, you know, it may not be perfect, but, yeah.
And then the other question is, the registration comes from the fact that these are not owner occupied. But what if the owner of the, of the, of the home was still living there and just had a bunch of house guests?
I don't know.
And would essentially be operating a business in his home of running recovery residence.
Possibly. I think the, the ones that I've seen in terms of, you know, that, that market themselves as sober homes or recovery residences seem to have anywhere from, you know, small, a small group of, you know, six to maybe max usually 14 people, and typically not owner occupied, just really, again, just sort of focusing on that pure supporter of people.
Right, I understand.
But, I mean, to say that, could an owner live in these?
Right, an owner could be, could be his gig, could be his, his side gig. And do we put a cap on here? You said 14.
There is, there is no cap on this right now.
And that's probably the state telling us there's no cap. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the counsel?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Grob.
Steve, just, I mean, this is kind of a follow-up to what Marty was saying, I think, but would there be any preset limit on occupancy? Or is that up to the size of the building and residence and things like that on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, I mean, as far as like code enforcement and so on, I mean, I think the home would obviously have to be set up for however many people, you know, if they're going to be, it, like anything, I mean, if it's, if it's, the, the number of people is going to dictate what types of improvements likely will have to be made to that property. And even if, I guess we don't, if, if changes are made without the city knowing of it in advance, as neighbors complain, I guess we sort of learn more about things and, you know, are faced with, you know, looking into that and then finding out how many, who owns it, how is it being run? Are they, are they a recovery residence or something else? And just sort of investigating that, and then, you know, applying code as necessary at that point in a reactive measure, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the counsel on our third public hearing?
Mr. Chair.
Attorney Decker.
Just to fill in more of what Steve was saying, because if the council would adopt this as a conditional use, the advantage of that is in the council can impose conditions upon the approval of that use. One of those certainly would have to be occupancy numbers. It's already a factor for CBRFs. It's regulated by the state in other ways. I wouldn't see why the council couldn't do that as a condition to one of these permits.
Thank you. If there's nothing else from the counsel, then I will ask if there's anybody in the audience that has comments or questions on public hearing number three. All right, seeing none, we will close our third public hearing, and I will ask our clerk to read public hearing number four.
Resolution to approve the year 2026 operating plan for the downtown West Dallas Business Improvement District and to adopt the special assessment method as stated therein.
Thank you. Turn it over to Mr. Caulfield.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carson Caulfield in Economic Development, and I am here to highlight the upcoming operating plan and subsequent budget for the West Dallas Downtown Business Improvement District. So just a quick refresher. The downtown is located from 76th and Greenfield all the way to 70th and Greenfield going east-west, and then it also goes north and south about a half a block both ways. There are approximately 90 businesses that are in the, in the bid, and all property owners were notified of this public hearing. So first, I just wanted to lay out some of the many accomplishments that the bid had this past year. There were multiple new businesses that opened in the downtown. We also worked in partnership with the bid to receive a Robert Wood Foundation grant, which is in partnership with the Main Streets Organization. West Dallas is one of three cities in the state of Wisconsin, and I believe Wisconsin is one of two states in the entire country to receive this award. So we're looking to implement some of these funds into the downtown in the coming months. The bid hosted 77 community events. A couple weeks back, I, I used our Placer AI tracking tool to just get an idea of how many visitors some of these events brought to our downtown. And the latest car show brought approximately 4,500 visitors to West Dallas, and à la carte brought just under 13,000 to our downtown. So great events that we have down here. The bid supported many various art initiatives, including the community art mural that is now on Cook's Building facing Greenfield Avenue. And if you haven't taken this South Alley, there are two new murals, one on Sue Plus Two and the other one on Talia's Event Venue. Might be completed, or it's still getting finished up. So a lot of great success in our downtown this past year. We've also had many ribbon cuttings in the downtown, and I just wanted to put up a few of the latest ones for you to see, which is awesome, and I believe we're at 2% vacancy in the downtown, so good problem to have. As required in the operating budget and operating plan, the bid has to list out some of their priorities and goals for 2026, so I just wanted to put a few of the main ones up there, growing the economic mix and vitality of the downtown, continuing, continuing to improve the downtown West Dallas image, continue, continue to expand outreach to resident schools and community partners for sponsorships, volunteers, and increase their number of friends-of businesses. So those are three of the main ones, and then continuing to support walkability, bikeability, and making downtown, you know, a safe place to shop and own a business. So just a quick walkthrough of the bid budget process. The bid subcommittees have goal-setting sessions for what their main priorities and initiatives are for the upcoming year. Once they have their goals laid out, they present those to Emily, the bid executive director, who then presents it to the bid board. And then once it's approved by the bid, it's brought to common counsel for final approval. So their proposed budget for 2026 is nearly identical to 2025. In fact, it is identical, it's just the, numbers are, are a bit changed with the assistance program in economic development, just a slight tweak in the funding source. But as you can see, the proposed budget is 146,600, and then the total proposed levy is 129,000, as you can see on the screen. So the total assessed value of the bid hasn't changed all that much year over year. I believe one property had a increased assessment of approximately 20,000, but otherwise it stayed pretty steady at 22.5 million. So with that, with the similar proposed budget, that doesn't really change much for the levy, as you can see. So it'll stay quite similar for our property owners downtown. It's $5.73 per thousand dollars of assessed value, which is how that, that number comes to be. So with that, I'd gladly open it up to questions or comments. Emily, the executive director from the bid, is also here, who could help if you have any questions or comments for the bid as well.
Thank you so much. Are there questions from the common counsel on our fourth and final public hearing?
Mayor Devine.
Seeing someone? Alderman Grisham.
I just want to make a comment about how great this is, that we've had such great success downtown, and Diane and Emily are a big part of that, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the counsel? Ten of them. All right, any questions or comments from the public on our fourth and final public hearing? All right, then we will close our last public hearing, and that will conclude that portion of the agenda. We'll go to part E, which is public participation. Is there anybody that wishes to address the counsel under public participation? Then I'm gonna save myself from reading the description of the public participation. And we will move, unless my attorney tells me I have to read it, okay. Then we'll move on to item F. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on the top of page two of your agendas. If you are here for a license or a permit or a specific item on the agenda, please take a look at that. And if you have questions, please grab one of us when we break for recess, and we will make sure we get you in the right committee room. Move to item G, the mayor's report. I just want to mention quickly a few things coming up. On Thursday this week, the 23rd, is a mass pumpkin carving at Honey Creek for Haunted Honey Creek. There is going to be a collection of about 100 pumpkins for the community to come and help to decorate the Honey Creek event that will be held on Friday. The carving event is four until seven on Thursday, and then on Friday is the actual Haunted Honey Creek event, which goes from four o'clock until nine o'clock. There will be music, there will be smores, there will be bonfire, cemetery tours, ghost stories, paranormal investigations, and other activities for family fun. I do want to take a minute to thank the REV for their sponsorship of this event Friday night in the community, and it's, it's always a good time. That does conclude the mayor's report. Do we have any reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Helverson. Just because I said man and not woman.
I want to go on record that trick-or-treating should be on Halloween, but since it's this Saturday, I just want to say, excuse me, be safe, wear warm clothing. Saturday, I just want to say, excuse me, be safe, wear warm clothing, you know, be nice to kids, even though they might not be kids from your neighborhood, they're coming into your neighborhood because they feel safe, so just give them some candy. That's all I got.
Thank you. Alderwoman Keen?
Mayor Devine, I just wanted to, Conrad Gardens Neighborhood Association is having their Halloween block party and chili cook-off this Saturday from twelve to three prior to trick-or-treat. They're going to be closing down the street between Eighty-Sixth and Eighty-seventh and Orchard. They're going to have a bounce house, craft station, chili cook-off, so come and enjoy. That again is Saturday from twelve to three prior to trick-or-treat, and I just wanted to, along with Alderwoman Grisham, welcome the Rev to D3. We attended the ribbon cutting. The place is great. For those who say, why would we need more apartments? Well, the fact that it's ninety-five percent rented would mean that those people thought we needed more apartments, and the place is great. So just wanted to welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Alderwoman Keen. Any other reports from the older persons?
Mayor Devine.
Oh, come on, guys. Alderwoman Grisham?
Not my favorite topic, contrary to what people may think. Alderwoman Keen and I are going to be taking a walk along with the City of West Dallas Code Enforcement Department and Southwest Suburban Health Department, doing two neighborhood walk-throughs, actually in District Two and District Three, for education purposes and to see what we can do as a community to kind of come together to combat this citywide issue of rats. It's not exclusive to the district representatives, so any of the other alders who want to join us in our districts, or spread the word to their residents to join us, it would be appreciated. The walkthrough schedule will be this upcoming Monday, October twenty-seventh, at three P.M. First meeting place will be Wes Mitchell and Ninety-Fourth Place, and then there's a second walk-along held in District Two on October thirtieth at one P.M., and that will be at Seventy-seventh Street and West Hicks. This is a social media post that has been put out on all of our social media channels, so hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Weigel?
Thank you, Mayor Devine. I was on a Teams meeting today that Wisconsin Department of Transportation hosted about the upcoming work project. You probably saw some of it in the media, and it's actually not in West Dallas, but it's definitely going to impact our community. So they're going to start the seven-year reconstruction of I-94 essentially between Seventieth Street and Sixteenth Street. They're starting with the west leg, I think later this week. So that west-leg construction, that's west of the stadium, is going to include closure of the eastbound on-ramp and the westbound off-ramp of I-94 at Holly Road, and that's going to be a permanent closure, okay? So again, that's not in the city of West Dallas, but I know a lot of our residents use that. And the, the relief for that, council's aware, and I think many of you are aware of this too, is that West Washington Street from Seventieth Street is going to be pushed through to the east in behind the old Alice Chalmers and drop down to Sixtieth Street, and that'll be called Alice Chalmers Way. But they're not doing that for four years, just so you know. I'm not sure why they're delaying on it, they didn't really have a valid reason for it, but it's going to get really crowded over there on National Avenue during rush hours, but that's WISDOT helping us out again, so that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other reports from the older persons?
Mayor.
Alderman Turner?
Just so everyone knows, tomorrow we're going to have a beauty conversation. At St. Augustine's site, twenty-twenty-five South Sixty-seventh Place, is concerning homelessness in the West Dallas area. Suzanne Singh, I didn't even very get her name right, will be there as well as interested parties from the neighborhood and around Milwaukee to discuss that.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other older persons' reports?
Mayor Devine?
You already got one.
I'm piggybacking.
Go ahead.
I just want to piggyback off of what Alderman Weigel said. The closure date that I recall from the meeting was November third for the East and West.
Thank you. Any other older persons' reports?
Mayor Devine?
There's not many of you left. I was hoping ten for ten. All right, Alderman Haas?
I move for approval of the October seventh, twenty-twenty-five common council minutes.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. If there are no changes or corrections, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Standing committing reports, we have none. Item K?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas?
For Item K, our consent agenda, there has been a request to refer Item sixteen to the administration committee. Do any older persons have any other requests for referrals to take items off of the consent Then seeing none, I move for approval of the consent agenda minus Item sixteen.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. If there is no discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Other person Turner?
Aye.
Weigel?
Aye.
Grisham?
Aye.
Grove?
Aye.
Haas?
Aye.
Helverson?
Aye.
Keen?
Aye.
Novak?
Aye.
Noling?
Aye.
Roat?
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas?
I move that the council stand in recess until the conclusion of our committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess.
It's like your 20 again.
Yeah.
Good evening. We will call the common council back to order and I will again ask our clerk to call their own.